Notice that Nene Johnson Stewart would not be here.
All right, thank you. So we have a quorum, we can continue. Next on our agenda, I'll ask for everyone to stand and for Mr. Little will say the prayer and then followed by Mr. Hardy with the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you, Lord, for the many blessings of life you have bestowed upon us. We pray tonight as we come to do this meeting that, Lord, everything that is needed done will be according to your will and, Lord, also for the will of the people of Pitt County. We pray that you might continue to bless each board member. We thank you for traveling mercies and we pray right now that you just would continue to bless, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Praise to God.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So next I'll ask for an approval for our minutes which were two months ago on February 21st. I'll ask for a motion of approval.
Some move.
Okay. You moved and seconded?
Who seconded?
All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Minutes are approved. Any public addresses to the board from the audience? I see none and I don't believe we had anybody sign up so we can close the public address session and move on to administrative matters. One thing we need to take care of is with a new planning director, Jonas Hill, we need to appoint an executive secretary. So I will entertain a motion to do just that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass Mr. Jonas Hill. I want Jonas Hill to be our executive secretary.
Second. Okay, motion and second has been made. Any discussion? Mr. Hill, any discussion from you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Next on our agenda, zoning request. Ben Rogers.
Good evening, everyone. We do have one rezoning request this evening. It is a little different than the normal rezonings that this board reviews in that the county is the one proposing this change. It is for a zoning request and a future land use map amendment that we're going to propose be done at the same time. So again, it is a request to establish rural agricultural zoning on approximately 9.58 acres of property and again, at the same time designate the properties as agricultural on the future land use map. The parcels are 89148 and 89150 owned by David C. Junior or Gwen G. Riley, excuse me, and then parcel number 89149 owned by Lucy Chavez and Margarita Pro... The properties are located on the southwestern side of NC 33 East and the northern side of State Road 1780. That's Boyd's Road along the Pitt County and Beaufort County line. Just general location, again, just south of NC 33, right on the Beaufort County and Pitt County line. A little background on why this is being brought to the board. Fairly recently, the Pitt County Tax Office determined that these properties are located within the county's planning and zoning jurisdiction. I believe the history, Beaufort County determined this and realized and made the county tax office aware of this. And again, they were not shown on our county map. Properties were not shown when county, when the county adopted zoning and the zoning map was adopted in August of 2003. Therefore, since we've realized this, these properties are unzoned. They were not included on our future land use map when we adopted Envision 2045 last year and that is why we're also proposing that this get added to the future land use map. You kind of see there that it kind of juts out in that area and again, this was just recently realized and it's more or less going to be a map correction. So the tax office has also requested that the North Carolina Geodetic Survey locate the official boundary line. This takes approximately two years so the intent of our request tonight is to zone the entire parcel. So whatever that survey identifies, that's what this request is going to propose that we go, the zoning and the future land use map be amended to the official boundary line once it is determined. Some site pictures. This is from NC 33 East looking into the parcels. This is 33 East towards Beaufort County, 33 East back toward Pitt County and Grimsland. This is the side roads, Boyd's Road looking at the parcels there. That's looking west on Boyd's Road and east back towards NC 33 East. Just to give an idea of the general character of the area, a couple of residences and there is some agricultural land directly across the street on Boyd's Road. So the existing land use, you see that that area is not included there. Everything out there is pretty much residential or agricultural or undeveloped. And then from the vision of Pitt County, future land use map, again, you see those parcels are not identified on the map and that entire area is identified as agricultural. So proposed future land use designation on the future land use map is agricultural. This designation does include prime farmlands that are vital to agricultural production within the county and activities include agriculture, forestry, and limited low-density residential and commercial or institutional uses typically located near strategic agricultural lands and surrounding areas. Proposed uses or potential uses are again, are agriculture, agribusiness, forestry, limited commercial, single-family properties, and occasional low-density small-scale residential subdivision. Utility access is typically onsite septic systems and community water service or private wells. Very limited sewer is typically available and the density is generally less than one dwelling unit per acre. As far as the zoning, again, the areas are not identified on our zoning map and everything except that one small block of commercial which is currently vacant land on 33 is zoned rural agricultural. Again, staff is recommending that these parcels be zoned RA and this district is primarily intended to accommodate very low-density residential uses as well as associated public and institutional uses, low-intensity commercial uses, and agricultural-related industrial uses which are interspersed throughout areas that are presently characterized as rural in nature. This district does reflect the diverse nature of land uses within the predominantly rural areas and therefore permits a wide array of land uses. So you see for both of these recommendations, we're proposing what is already out there and we do have two separate kind of motions that we're going to be requesting. So the first recommendation from staff is to approve the request to amend the future land use map in the Envision Pitt County 2045 comprehensive land use plan to designate the subject properties as agricultural. Staff does find that this is consistent with the proposed designation given that the majority of the surrounding area is also designated as agricultural. Staff does find that this request is reasonable and is in the public interest because land uses in the area are predominantly agricultural and residential and the majority of the surrounding area is currently zoned as RA. And then the second part of it, their staff does recommend approval to establish the RA zoning district on these properties. So public comments will not be entertained by the planning board. Planning board will then make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners who are currently scheduled to hold a public hearing at their May 20th meeting. So I'm happy to answer any questions. But again, the main thing here is that this was identified as missing on our maps and staff is trying to update the maps to properly include this. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, we didn't have anyone sign up to speak for or against this. Anybody have any questions for Ben?
My question is, is DOT going to move the Pitt County side?
Possibly. I would have sensed that that's correct that they should do that to reflect the accurate location of it, but I would think so.
I have a question. Will this, the tax for the property, well, I don't know, will the county get the tax money from these properties?
So in talking with our tax assessor, the way the tax offices have worked in the past, Beaufort County and Pitt County had several different properties that kind of crossed county lines and they did sort of a land swap. They gave Beaufort County a certain amount of acreage to tax and Pitt County took a certain amount of acreage to tax for Pitt County. With the, this was all done back in the 90s, early 2000s. With the advancement of GIS and that sort of thing, they now have gone back to the general statutes and made the division based on that boundary line and are appropriately taxing what's in each county based off the acreage now. So that's kind of the history as to how this came about and hopefully it'll be better now. So yes, Pitt County will and has already started collecting taxes on the portion in Pitt County.
So these people hadn't, or the parcels hadn't somehow fallen into this tax free zone previously and now have been reclaimed?
Actually, I think what happened was they were being taxed by Beaufort County on these particular parcels. Now they're using that boundary line, which is why they're looking at doing that boundary survey to actually identify the correct line.
So they'll have taxes in both counties?
Yes, yes, based off their acreage moving forward, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that the, these three parcels be designated as rural agricultural and that the land use map be amended as the planning staff has recommended.
Second, Don Brown.
Before we move on to a vote, could we go ahead and close the public hearing?
Oh, yes, public hearing is closed, thank you, yes.
I got a question. Step back if you may. Did I not hear you say that they would be taxed by Beaufort County and Pitt County?
Correct, because their property lies within both counties. So they won't get double taxed, it's just they will be taxed on the acreage in Pitt County by Pitt County and the acreage in Beaufort County by Beaufort County.
I think, say, that would bring me to me.
Absolutely, yes, yes. They will not be double taxed, but they will be taxed appropriately.
So motions been made and properly seconded. Any other discussion? Did you receive any phone calls from anyone?
I got one phone call when a gentleman saw the sign up, explained what it was. He was concerned there was potentially going to be commercial out there. When I explained the situation, he'd been very aware of the whole line issue out there. I think he's dealt with those tax offices in the past, so he completely understood and had no concerns once he realized what it was we were doing. When he first saw the sign, I think he was concerned there was going to be some commercial out there, but once I explained the situation, he knew more about the history of it than I did, you know, going back with the deal with both counties in that area.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can you reread that motion? Or can you restate it?
Yes, sir.
Did that take care of it immediately?
It did, because there's two separate parts to it. One to establish the zoning and then one to, to amend the future land use map. I think you did capture.
Yes, I did.
So it's both in the same motion?
Yes, sir. And the motion includes amending.
Pertaining to the lease program for bought properties, also some American Rescue Plan assisted policy for our repair and replacement program, also the amendment to the Neuse River Hazard Mitigation Plan which was approved by the Board of Commissioners, as well as your monthly reports for February and March from the Planning Department. And then we also included some other articles and correspondences in that and if there's any questions on anything, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, that's all I have for you.
All right. I like him already.
Any other business from the board before we?
Only I guess congratulations are in order to Jonas for his new duties.
Thank you, and I look forward to working with each one of you and move forward.
Much to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
Second. All right. Second.